Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson and Stephanie Phillips with another episode of Veterans in Politics. Today, we have Dr. Nancy Bruni, Las Vegas City Council, Ward Number Six. But before we get to Councilwoman Bruni, Ms. Phillips.
Thanks for joining us, everybody, and thank you to all of our sponsors. We have Semper Fi Heating and Cooling. It is hot out there, so get in touch with them to check your system. Their website is callsimperfi.com. Callsimperfi.com. We also have Mayor Michelle Romero. She is running for reelection in Henderson for mayor, and her website is votemichelleromero, wait a second, yes, votemichelleromero.com. Votemichelleromero.com. We also have a border regents candidate running for District Three. His name is Angelo Carvalho, and his website is carvallofornevada.com, and that is the number four. Carvallofornevada.com. Get in touch with him. And we have a new sponsor just this week, and it is a CD4 candidate. It is Cody Whipple, and his website is codykforcongress.com. Codykforcongress.com. Jump on his website and see what his platform is about. And also, don't forget to pick up your copy of Steve's book, How to Navigate Nevada's Family Court System. You can get a copy on Amazon. It is $14.99. If you are a litigant going through family court, and you don't have an attorney and can't afford one, this book will help you through. It's a self-help book. And get a copy, and he will autograph it for you. Also, we have now put our tickets on sale for the Valentine's Ball. It's coming up on February 7th of 2026, and I know that's a ways away, but we have extra early bird tickets on sale. You can jump on our social media pages, and you can get the link and where to get tickets, and also be aware that there are tables. If you are a candidate, have a business or a nonprofit, you can get a table and advertise your stuff at the Valentine's Ball. And there's, and also you can advertise your logo for whatever you want to on our event program. So that's also on there. And there's only a limited amount of tickets available for these extra early bird tickets. And you, these are the cheapest I think you've ever put these on, right? So you're gonna save a lot of money. The regular price for these tickets is $125, and these are on for $99. So you're gonna save a bunch. So grab your tickets early. Also, we have a merch store, VIPimerch.com. Check out all the fun stuff we have on there for you. And what am I forgetting? Oh, VIPiConsulting.com. That is our consulting website. If you are a candidate and in need of a campaign manager, get in touch with us on that. And if you want to advertise your sign, if you're a candidate, have a business or a nonprofit, give us a call, and we have a few spots left, and you can advertise on our show. So as for my rant, guys, this rant is not going to be nice. It's not gonna be pretty. I apologize in advance, but there are some people that need to be called out for the horrible things that they say. Mark, I know when you do the YouTube version, you can zoom in on this picture, and I'm also going to send screenshots of what I'm about to tell you and read. And you can put that in the video, too. We had on Bill Henderson last week, and he's a judge in family court, if you remember. So we always post pictures of who we have on the show. So we posted a picture of Judge Henderson, and we had this gentleman, Ali Shaw is his name, right here. He jumped in on the comments, and there were 19 comments in all. They have since been either removed by Facebook or taken off by Mr. Shaw, because I'm sure he was embarrassed about his big mouth and the horrible racist awful things he was saying. He starts out by saying, "Bill Henderson is absolute garbage. Another crooked family court so-called judge? Why do you support crooked judges, Steve Sanson? You claim transparency, yet you support some of the most corrupt judges." This is what Ali Shaw wrote as a comment. So we went back and forth. I took issue with him. Steve took issue with him, and I said, "Put your proof out there. Put your fact. What are your facts? You don't just come on here and say slanderous comments without any kind of backup. Do you have any ethics complaints? Do you have any lawsuits? What do you have?" And he says, "Bill Henderson has a history as a corrupt judge speaks for itself." He said, "My case is sealed, and I don't need to lay any claims here on Facebook. You guys should know corrupt judges. Go look up Matthew Harder." Then he starts talking about Matthew Harder. Well, Judge Harder has passed away. He is not with us anymore, and this Ali Shaw guy was trying to deflect and start talking about Judge Harder instead of staying on the subject of Henderson, which he claims he's corrupt. So I kept asking him in the comments, "What's he corrupt about? Why do you say that?" I said, "Ali Shaw, put your facts here in public. Show your lawsuit or ethics complaints against Henderson. If you have any to back up what you're claiming, I don't see anything but you talking about Harder. This post isn't about Harder. Your claims are about Henderson, that you keep bringing up Harder." So we continued to go back and forth, and then he absolutely lost it, because Steve was now in the comment section. And Ali Shaw, and I'm gonna put these screenshots in the video, because I want everybody to know about this guy. He said, "Steve Sanson, yeah, effy, sorry, N-word." With an R at the end is what he called Steve. He said, "You are right, and you are the smart one, fat piece of S-H-I-T." Right here. Ali Shaw called Steve the N-word, and it's written right here. And I know Mark will zoom in on this, and I will give you these screenshots. So he doesn't have any balls. He is not a man, because he would not dare say that to Steve's face. He sits behind his little computer screen and is one of those keyboard warriors, is the biggest coward racist disgusting despicable piece of garbage I have ever seen. This is absolutely intolerable. So he blocked us, I believe, on Facebook. We will not tolerate this kind of language, speech, anything. And I would say to you, Ali, I'm gonna put this all over Facebook, so you're gonna be famous for what you said? You owe him a huge apology. Don't you ever write that on our Facebook pages and comments or any of our posts ever again. And if you are any kind of man, if you have any kind of balls, you come and face him, and you apologize to him. You disgust me.
And my number is 702-283-8088. I will meet you at any time, any place, just you and I, and we could have a discussion on how to use the N-word in a better formulation in the sentence. Thank you.
Sorry, we had to do that, begin with your show.
We don't like racist.
No, it is awful.
Dr. Bruni.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming. Our show gets a little bit excited.
Yes. That's what our rant's about. I'm just glad I'm not the subject. I wouldn't be around, so we're all good. It's all good.
Could you give us a bio, please? Don't leave anything out, though.
So I've been representing Ward Six in the city of Las Vegas since 2022. And Ward Six, for those of you who don't, most people don't know where they live. It's really the northwest area of Las Vegas, the fastest-growing area. The northern border is kind of Kyle Canyon, all the way down Decatur on the west side. The east side is North Las Vegas, then down to Lone Mountain. That's the southernmost border, and then up the 95 and including Sky Canyon in North Providence. So that's the area I represent. Prior to running for city council, I ran, or I founded and ran the Kenny Gwynne Center for Policy Priorities, which is the state's only bipartisan policy center. And so in that scheme, we did a lot of research on issues that affect the bad ends, ranging from K through 12 education, higher education, workforce development, tax policy, energy choice policy, et cetera. And so I did that for 10 years. And prior to that, I was actually working at Sandia National Labs, one of our nation's nuclear security labs, for about four years over in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Yeah.
Where'd you get your PhD?
Got my PhD from Yale in political economy, which is politics and economics. And then I have a master's in public policy and a bachelor's in government. So I've always been drawn to public policy and trying to find common sense solutions to solve some of the challenges and problems facing our neighbors.
You're a smart one, huh?
I like policy, so that probably makes me a geeky.
Congratulations on getting your doctorate, because I think that's very impressive.
Thank you.
I didn't know any of that.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah, when I read your, geez, it's smart.
It took me 10 years to get my doctorate. The average is like five years, just because I've always been really applied. So I love working. I've been working since I was 14, and so I was doing a lot of consulting work, and I was traveling around the world as a consultant. So that kept me busy a lot. So it took me a long time to get that PhD.
So you've been on council for four years?
Almost four, three and a half, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts of running? I know you're running for reelection this time.
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts of running for another office?
Yep.
Want to stay on the council?
My husband likes to say I'm exactly where I'm supposed to be. When I ran, I will say I ran because at the Gwynne Center, we were doing a lot of policy reports, a lot of research, and kind of presenting that to the legislature, and I got really frustrated that the legislature did not always adopt all of my amazing recommendations. And so I said, "I can keep being frustrated, or I can maybe go be in charge of implementing policy." And so I did. That's one of the reasons I ran. And I will say the policy moves much more slowly at city council than, say, the legislature or even maybe the county commission. But I love the constituent outreach. I ran for city council because it stays true to kind of my own nature, which is it's a nonpartisan race. And at the end of the day, I strongly believe that the quality of life issues that we address at the city and local level, they're not partisan. They're not a D or an R. It's all about creating neighborhoods that people want to live in and raise their families in and play in. And so it's been amazing, and we built an amazing coalition of neighbors who also care about the neighborhood. So it's been really wonderful.
Did you know? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
How do you get past, when you're writing policy and you're working with both sides and trying to make everyone happy, a lot of times we hear, you know, automatically they ask, "Well, what is your affiliation?" And once they find out, then immediately they have an opinion, and they don't even give you a chance. How do you get past that? And what do you say to people when they say it? Because they may find out what your affiliation is. And, "Oh, I just automatically can't." I hear that so much, but they don't look at the person. They look at that title first.
Well, I know when we started the Gwynne Center, you know, 10, 13 years ago, people were like, "How do you really do bipartisan work?" And so we've been initially, or even today, we've always had a bipartisan board, and so the board collectively decided what sorts of topics we would look in, look into. And then we followed the, we used data, and then we followed the sort of academic procedure, where you send the reports out to people who represent different perspectives, and they would read a draft to make sure that it wasn't pushing a certain political agenda or specific agenda, I mean, perspective. And so I will tell you, one of my proudest moments is we did a 120-page report on the energy choice, and that was sort of, you know, you had switch wanting the energy deregulation and envy energies sort of opposed to it, and it went to the people ultimately. But our report, when it came out, was used by both sides to justify their own position, because the report was balanced and showed sort of pros and cons for the argument. So I think the Gwynne Center is, continues to be very well-respected. It's now housed at UNR. But people do look at it because the research remains unbiased, neutral, but also grounded in research and evidence-based practices. And so people do look at it as good, solid research and policy.
Did you know that I ran for Ward Six back in '03?
I did not know that.
Against Steve Ross.
So you must have been in the city, because you were just saying you live in the county.
Yeah, I was definitely in the city at that time. I have moved on to, I've moved three times since then, against Steve Ross.
And what were the issues that you were talking about or trying to weigh in back in 2003?
Sure. One of the issues is still an issue today. It was Sky Canyon, going up towards Mount Charleston. And that, all that land, I believe Focus Group purchased it, and there was problems with the Mount Charleston residents. They didn't want anything built on that land. And now I'm hearing that there's a master plan for that land to build houses, development. Is that true?
So there are a couple pieces. So there's Sky Canyon, and then north of that is Kyle Canyon.
Kyle Canyon, that's the one.
Yes. So the challenge, and then, so let me be clear, Kyle Canyon, the trouble. So I think at one point Focus Group did organize on it, but the problem we're experiencing now with Kyle Canyon is there's no single owner. There are hundreds of owners, and so we actually can't build it out with a master plan, because there are so many disparate owners. Now, we are talking about the 990 acres east of Kyle Canyon, just north of Sunstone, which we are talking to a group about building a master plan community.
Ward Six is the only, is the only ward in Las Vegas that actually have land, correct?
There are, there are, yes, yes. I think Ward Six is where we have sort of the most available land and sort of the biggest parcels. So we're having like 990 acres that we're talking about. Ward Four also has some as well, but in the other areas, it's mostly infill, smaller pieces.
And I remember back in '03, when I used to drive down the 95, headed, what was that?
North.
North. And the most busiest exit was Anne Road, and now it's
Sky Canyon.
All busy down there. And I've noticed that we have more and more residents, because I live in your ward, well, island in the county.
I'll adopt you as a Ward Six resident.
And I live in your ward, and what I've noticed is that there is no metro substation. And I contacted the sheriff and asked him about it, and he said that there's gonna be one building there. When would that happen? He didn't give me specifics.
Yeah, so one of the things that I, one of the platform issues I ran on is we have grown so much, to your point, but we haven't invested the infrastructure to keep up with that growth and support it. So one of the first things that we pushed for, when goes Francis Allen Flensky and I came into office, is we asked for a metro substation. And so our city manager and city leadership team worked really closely with Metro. And we do have a metro substation. We're breaking ground this late summer and then opening next summer. And the location is Grand Teton in Wallaipai. So, and then that will be very close to the Grand Teton Bridge, so our officers can respond immediately to calls on this side of the 95. So we're really excited. And it'll be next to a park and a Green Valley Grocery Store, which will have a community center available for anyone to use.
So you have a lot of horse property in your ward?
Yes.
So that means you have a lot of wells in your ward, and that means you have a lot of septic in your ward. So I know the Las Vegas Valley water over there at Lake Neade is going down and down and down and down. How come they don't offer something to give homeowners that are on septic a free hookup without, into sewer, without having them fill out any paperwork or anything like that? Just sign here, free hookup, so they can have all that water that's coming from their well that they don't have anyway? So how come they don't offer something like that? I know they got the 8515 program. The Southern Nevada Valley Water is doing that, and the county is doing 100%, but the county is not in our area yet. That's what they told us, because we called up the county, and they said they're not in our area, so they're not offering that program in Centennial Hills yet. How could we speed that up? Because we're given, I mean, all of us that are on well water, it goes right to our leach field, and you'll never see, and I mean, we, Nevada is the one that recycles water, better than California would ever do, and we recycle what?
Better than many people in the world.
97% of our water, and we're giving you our well water. I have well water that, I mean, they told me that the well water is for about 100 years. So, and it's three homes that are hooked up to it. So we have well water. When you guys run out of water, we have water. We're gonna sell our water to you, just to let you know. So if you, if you want these, if you want these homeowners to give up their well water that, you know, they already use to go into your treatment plant, you gotta offer them an incentive program that is nothing out of their pocket, because you're gonna get their water. That's what you're gonna get to hook them up the sewer.
Yep. So one interesting fact is, you know, we've had rapid growth here in the state. We actually use less water now than we did 20 years ago, because Southern Nevada Water Authority has been one of the world's leaders in conservation. So I think that's a really, you know, it's important to tooth their horn. The conversion is very expensive. So the legislature, I think some of the ARPA monies were set aside for that conversion. I know we, our congressional delegation, I think there was actually a bill or a line item in one of, a piece of legislation to actually try to dedicate money for the conversions. And so one of the reasons why it's taking so long, I think they've decided that for economies of scales, it's more efficient to sort of do region by region, that conversion. So I don't know when they're coming out here. I will find out for you. I know Francis actually has many more wells than we do out here, and so they may be moving, yeah. She's got the most number, actually.
I thought you had the most number.
She does, and that, the county donut over there, that is Commissioner Becker's area. But there were state funds. I know Southern Nevada Water Authority has funds or had funds, the water district. And then I think even the city was trying to put aside a little bit of money.
But wouldn't that make sense, though?
Oh, yeah, and they're trying to. It's just because it is, like, I think I heard it was like a $1.3 billion proposition. I mean, it's very expensive, and so we're gonna have to do it a little bit over each year.
And then, sorry, in addition to that, the way the SNWA explained it to me, you have to come up with all the money out of your pocket for the conversion, and they'll pay you back 85%. So you'll have to come up with 100%. So let's say your conversion is $34,000. You have to come up with $34,000, and then they'll, they'll give you back the 85%.
I haven't heard that, so.
And you gotta supply all your invoices and stuff like that. A lot of, a lot of those guys down there, homeowners, they don't want to do all that. They don't want to, I mean, they're like, "Hey, look here. You want my water? Then hook it up for free. I'm giving you my water. I mean, I don't use it. I don't care if it goes in the leach field. I don't care if it goes down to your drain to the sewer, to Lake Las Vegas. I don't care where it goes. But if you want it, then act like you want it," you know? So I just wanted to bring that up.
And it would probably take three or four months for you to get that money back by the time they process it through the government, you know, system.
Well, I'll tell you, we did the grass conversion, and that the refund came very quickly. I was impressed with how quickly they, once you submit the paperwork, yeah, I was just, I think, blessed and I'm like, so.
So we came down there, we testified about a couple of things, one of them being the judicial selection process and all of that. And it seemed like before that vacancy, there really wasn't anything on the books and no process. So I wondered what the result was after that. Is there a process in place now? Are there written guidelines of what you guys follow? Is it similar to the Judicial Selection Commission?
That is a very good question. I first want to thank you for coming down and testifying, because I had been looking at that, and then so it was helpful to have you all come down.
You're like, "Here they come again."
No, no. It was helpful for you all to come down, and I think there are a couple of us, you know, I don't know if you remember Councilman Chandra Summers Armstrong. She was also very familiar. And so I think we were very much aligned with, we need something like this as well.
Something written, that way you don't have to like guess all the time.
So I will check, because I don't actually know, I think the, we were supposed to write something up, and maybe we did. I just, my memory is a little foggy.
You want us to write it up for you?
No, no, no. I mean, I will, I'll check and see where we are, but I think we are anticipating, you know, we might be confronting that situation next year or two, so it'd be good to make sure the procedures are in place.
And then the public is able to come down and listen to the interviews and testimony and be able to submit either opposition or support for whoever those candidates are.
Is that, is that the way it works at the state level?
Oh, yeah. We've been down there many times to testify, well, in opposition.
And the county, too.
Yeah. So, no, that part, I think, is the most important out of that that was missing, that the public wasn't involved, and it wasn't on your website. There wasn't, you know, it wasn't advertised who those candidates were. And I think that part was important, too, because the selection commission, they put all the candidates there.
Well, you know, I think that's the benefit, well, I think it speaks highly, first of all, of the city of Las Vegas, two things. I think that's one of the benefits of, you know, elections and, you know, the fact that we, you know, have term limits and a sense of like, you know, we've had openings in the past, and no one has sort of looked at this system or said, "Hey, can we do it differently?" And then you have me coming in. I'm relatively new. You have Councilman Summers Armstrong, who's new. And I think we brought a fresh perspective, like, hey, I know we've been doing it this way all along, but maybe we could improve upon the system. And then you have a city who really, I mean, I will tell you, I keep joking that once I finish this, I want to come work for the city, because my experience in the three and a half years that I've been there is when you bring them a problem, they try to find a way to say yes, or say, "Hey, that is an interesting idea. We haven't done it that way before, but let's look into it." And so they try, I think, we're not quite to where the state is in their judicial selection process, but they did take our early input and try to do something a little bit different to incorporate the input. So I am grateful that they said, "Okay, we heard you. We'll try." And they're willing to keep tweaking, I think, until we all feel comfortable. I think a lot of people could just say, "No, we're doing it this way. We've always done this this way." Back off, but they didn't.
And the council, we believe, in our humble opinion, shouldn't sit on the initial board. Should only sit when they got the, the three names, and then they vote on the three names. Because if you was voting for Johnny Baker, let's say, and Johnny Baker made it to the final, who are you gonna vote for?
Yeah.
Johnny Baker, you know?
Well, I said, "I didn't need to sit on it," because I don't know what questions to ask. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know how to judge.
Yeah, we would love to be.
Are you a lawyer? Well, I think that
We wrote the book. Come on, man.
Well, I didn't know you had the books, so I'd like to talk to you about.
We did a collection one, too, a few years back.
Because I have a couple constituents, actually, who have reached out to me about their challenges with the family court system. So I'm gonna get that book and give it to her.
Maybe that's another show we could talk about.
Yeah, that'd be great, actually.
So how about health and safety in Ward Six? Are there enough clinics there, or what's the story?
I am proud to say with, you know, and this is really our marshals.
You sit on the board, too, right?
I sit on the, I serve as a secretary of the Southern Nevada Health District, and public health is sort of one of my specialty areas. I'm very passionate about it. We have, Ward Six is still the safest area in the city in terms of the crime stats. And I want to commend our marshals, who, we have some of the biggest parks in the city with Foylham Park, which is what, 900 acres, and Centennial Hills Park, lots of traffic there, and our metro officers.
You know what I heard? The mayor of North Las Vegas is gonna bust down their homeless people and put them in Ward Six. I'm just messing with you.
Well, I will tell you, you know,
Whole new problem for her to deal with.
No, but it's, I mean, you laugh, but, you know, people don't know where they live, and we do. It's interesting. We do actually have some folks who are unhoused, who sort of move back and forth along Decatur between the North Las Vegas and Vegas side, and it's sort of like, and so our team, you know, if we see someone, we will call and have our more team go out and try to connect them to services, even if technically they're on the North Las Vegas side, because they don't know, they need services. It doesn't really matter if it's that side or this side, and so we're just trying to help them.
You wanted to bring up the parking.
Yeah, the other thing that we were testifying about was the handicap parking down there. And you saw Steve's video and how difficult that was to get and how far that was. So I have heard that the city has allowed two designated spots across the street from uni. And I was wondering why it was just two, and if there were, was consideration for possibly, there's four spots across North, across Clark on the north end that are very accessible to uni court. If a couple of those might be designated for handicap parking as well.
Well, again, I want to thank you for bringing that issue to Well, again, I want to thank you for bringing that issue to our attention. I will share after I got your email or saw, I think you emailed or called, but then also had the video. I actually drove around.
You drove?
I drove that and I drove the Justice Center to, to see like, what is the situation?
Thank you for doing that.
No, well, thank you.
And, and thank the city for Mayor Berkeley for getting those two handicaps.
Well, and one of my passion areas is just the, our folks with different abilities. I'm very sensitive, we've done lots of research reports. And so I am sympathetic to the ADA issues. And so I went immediately to our city manager and said, hey, what can we do about this? It's an issue. And it turns out Mayor Berkeley, to your point, had also gone to our city manager. He said, we're looking at it. I think Stephanie, that the idea is to do two and then sort of chart the usage to see, okay, is there enough demand to warrant more or is, is two enough? And so I think they were going to do like a six to 12-month pilot to sort of figure out what the demand for those spaces. And so I believe it's like reservation. I, I can't remember how they were going to do it, but I'll check in. But yeah, I, I think they're open to reserving more if in fact they're finding that there's a lot of demand.
Tell the taco truck to go home, then you have two more right there.
Yeah, that guy, he's blocking, yeah, Clark and First and all that. Well, I just want to say thank you because, and I also want to say to everybody out there, you know, people think that it, it's a waste of time or, you know, nothing is, you can't fight City Hall, nothing's going to happen. But, you know, going down and testifying and, you know, talking with the council members and, and everybody, you do get results. And kudos to you guys because you considered it and looked at it and took action. And we really appreciate that.
I love the city council members. I, I can remember, I went to Bob Behr's in Stavros Anthony. And I said, hey, I went to the city jail and I went to bail somebody out and it was raining. And you guys have the city jail window right there and there was no cover and it's on the outside. And I'm like, you need to put a cover on there because, because somebody's in jail, that doesn't mean they're guilty. And that doesn't mean the loved ones, why should the loved ones suffer and get rained out and burned up by the sun?
Even if that's only necessary like seven days out of the year, right? Like raining big is right, but still.
You never know.
All right, sun, let's go with the sun. So they, Bob Behr's and Stavros Anthony, they put a, they, they found the money and put a cover over the bail bonds windows. So, so the, the city have been, you know, they, they hear a problem and they, they have results. So I, I enjoyed it. I enjoy the working relationship between the city and the constituents.
Well, and it feels like, you know, at least in my office, it's, it's just a lot of case management. We get so many calls and my, my team member, Blanca Lindsay, I mean, she must answer probably 20, 50 calls a day and emails. And we, we try to respond to everyone. We put porta potties, like if someone brings a problem to us, we try to address it.
What about flood control in the Northwest area? Is, is that good to go now? Because August is usually our flood season.
I think they've been doing, this is before me, but I think over the years, I know it used to flood by my house. And now we've got this retention basin and so I think.
You live far from me?
Not too far, no, remember, we're, we're the neighbors. I think we live like a mile from each other.
And I'm in the county, you're in the city.
Yeah, so we just let our water go into your.
Does that one happen?
I think they've been doing a lot of flood drainage control with detention basins and, and sort of accounting for like the slope design. So I think we're, we're better than we were when I first moved here.
And what boards do you sit on, Councilwoman?
So with the city, so what happens is there are about eight to 10 boards that city council members sit on. And so we express our preferences to the mayor, but then the mayor ultimately decides which boards she wants to put us on. So I currently serve as the vice chair of the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. And I asked to be on that board because housing is one of my, that's one of the reasons I ran. I also served as a secretary of the Southern Nevada Health District. I serve on the Nevada League of Cities Board, the Tulie Springs Monument Board, and the Civilian Military Council.
Okay, so I have another question for you. Speaking of Kyle Canyon, I was told, because you know, people whispered to me all over the place. So I was told that Station Casino was planning to build something on Kyle Canyon. Is that, is that true? Is that accurate statement?
It's sort of the piece of land between Kyle Canyon and Sky Canyon. It's, so between, so it's not on Kyle Canyon directly, just slightly south. But yes, they have had a reservation for a gaming establishment. They haven't submitted plans. They've had that reservation before I took office.
How many acres?
I want to say 35 to 40, but don't quote me, it could be more.
Is that by the Paiute?
No, the Paiute are on north and on the east side.
How do you, do you, are you familiar with the reservation over there? Do you go and you talk to travel leaders?
Yeah, I actually, we have, they have a new chair, Benny So. We've actually had him on our TV program to interview him. I think we're in a great spot for a stronger partnership. I know they're really planning to, as part of their economic development plan, really build out the reservation with maybe gaming or a hotel. And so totally supportive. I think it's important that we're good neighbors.
And Mount Charleston is not part of the city, correct?
It is not part, that is Commissioner Becker's district.
You want it?
April, we're going to take part in your thing.
I think Kirkpatrick, isn't that Kirkpatrick?
No, it's Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, she's up in the Northwest, yeah.
Yeah.
So how do you feel from the first time you sat down at the diocese until now? What, what, what knowledge have you gained since then?
Again, I think I've learned that the policy moves, like our scope of policy is really narrow. Things move really slowly, but are, I've also, again, become really impressed with how innovative and forward-thinking the city is. And so it's been a wonderful surprise.
Very cool. Ms. Phillips, you have anything more?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, you know, money is appropriated in different areas and all that. If there's one thing that you could give more money to or fund more, something that you would change that bothers you, that shouldn't be, what, what would that be?
That's a great question. I mean, I think my gut ans, gut answer would be something in our neighborhood services. And I will share, one example is one of our most successful programs, helping our unhoused, is called Ticket to Home, where we talk to folks. And if they have family members or they're originally from Indiana and they say, and they express like, I'd love to go back to my feet. Like I came here, my boyfriend dumped me, I don't have any money to go back home. We will actually call the family member in Indiana, make sure that person has a warm bed and a family to go back to. And we will put them on a bus or like maybe even an airplane ticket and send them back home. And that is our most successful program. I think it's only funded like $100,000 a year. And so I've been advocating for more funding for that because again, we're not, we're not trying to, you know, just get rid of the unhoused, but if, if there's a loving family so they don't have to live on the streets or in their car, like, let's help them get back there. So.
That's great.
I, I have a, a question about abandoned properties.
Yes.
What happens if you see a house that's all boarded up? And maybe it had a fire and it's all boarded up, nobody lives there. Now it's an eyesore. And I know it's private property, but now it's an eyesore for everybody. And it also brings down property value, is that right? Ms. Ms. Phillips, it also brings down property value. What could you do about these abandoned houses that are boarded up?
So I believe the city has been working on ordinance or policy around that. I know we were talking about that when I first got into office. And then most recently at the legislature, the legislature gave local jurisdictions the, or no, actually is requiring local jurisdictions to, to implement a policy around how they are going to treat those abandoned properties. And they view it as a public health risk and issue. And so when I asked our city about that, they said, we already have a policy in place. And so now it's just a matter of kind of figuring out how to implement it.
And I want to thank Brian Knitz, and he knocked down one of those buildings for me. Thank you, Brian, good job.
He's been great to work with.
And that, that, that was in a different part of the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Have anything else for Dr. Councilwoman Bruni?
No, I just want to wish you a lot of luck on your campaign, on your campaigning.
Thank you for having me back, it's been a couple of years, but.
And I think you're doing a marvelous job, by the way. Just, just to put that out there, you know I don't give compliments.
Oh, I know.
Dr. Bruni, now this is your time. Mark is going to zoom in on you and you could say whatever you want to say. Vote for me, my name is Bruni, whatever you want to say, your website, your, your contact, stuff like that.
Okay, well, anyone, please reach out if you have any issue. No, you know, no issue is too big or too small. You can email us at ward6@lasvegasnevada.gov or call 702-229-5463. It has been an honor to have represented the people of Ward Six for the last three and a half years. And I look forward to continuing to work with everyone. And happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, Doc.
Be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Yes, happy Fourth of July to all the men and women out there who donned the uniform, Marine Corps, Army, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, Space Force. Did I miss anybody? Boy Scout, Girl Scout, thank you for your service. That was Dr. Nancy Bruni, Las Vegas City Council, Ward Number Six. And Dr. Bruni has been doing a tremendous job in Ward Six. She's very intelligent, as you can tell with all those degrees. You have common sense too, right? She has a lot of common sense, very intelligent. And I'd like to see her back on the city council again. This is Steve Sanson, Stephanie Phillips with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.